I'll call this meeting the Brattleboro Towns Board to its order at 5:00, say it's on that clock, 5:01 world time. So, at this time, I'll take nominations for the election of board chair.
I'd like to nominate Jill Stahl Tyler.
Any other nominees? Hearing none, all in favor of Jill as the board chair, seek to 5 by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Turn the meeting, oh, any nays? I don't think so. Well, says anybody out there? Okay, so I'll turn the meeting over to Jill.
Okay, so we need an election of the vice chair at this point. Any nominations?
Oh, go ahead. I thought you were about to nominate.
No.
Nominate Kim.
Okay. I'll second that one. All right. Any more nominations? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thanks, Kim. And now we need a clerk, which has been Kim's position, and Gish Mark has done that too over here.
Dave has done that.
David's done it. So, just as point of information before we say what that is, the clerk takes minutes, should Kelly not be able to be here, or if we go into executive session, an executive session doesn't generally have minutes, except to say what time we come out of executive session, and if any motion is actually made and voted on.
Does the clerk get, still get the minutes to read through before they're sent off for being?
Actually, I've usually gotten those, but we could, I don't know, if it's supposed to be the clerk?
Yeah, well, yeah, to the clerk.
Oh. I'll change that process starting tonight.
Are we good?
Well, you get them to Barb.
Right.
And Barb sends them to the clerk.
Oh, okay.
Oh, well, she's usually sent them to me just to see if there's anything, because we were changing the format so much, really. So, that's really about it for the clerk, and then occasionally some thank you notes and such. By the way, did we do that for the last, we need to do that for the last town rep meeting that we usually thank for administrators and the professionals that came and spoke. So, any nominations for that?
Would anyone like to self-nominate?
For what?
For the clerk.
The clerk? Does it do nothing?
That's what we just went through, what we do. That would be the position I was just talking about.
Taking the minutes if Kelly's not available, or noting what time the executive session closes, and letting them do their own.
I'll do it.
Self-nominating, there's a second from David? Here we go. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so Spoon will be the clerk. And then nomination of three WSESU voting members. And I think for this last time, it was Kim and me and...
Mark.
Mark?
Yep.
Say a little bit about what that is.
So, the thing that confused me when I came onto the school board was what exactly, who has jurisdiction or looks over which parts. So, there's the supervisory union, and then there's the individual districts. And so, the individual districts are, in our case, Brattleboro Town, which is over several schools, and the early education services, but the rest of the towns is basically just the one school. And so, all the rest of them, all of us, NBUHS is their own standalone as well, which is comprised of everybody that comes to the high school as, well, that's kind of not a good way to say it. So, it's comprised of Vernon, Dumberston, Putney, Guilford, and Brattleboro. And that board is over the middle school BAMS, and the Wyndham Regional Career Center, and the high school. It's called District 6. And so, that board is comprised of various members in a proportional method. And then that board also elects three. Everybody bring in three?
Mm-hmm.
To come to the SU level. And so, then the SU level meetings, by and large, discuss policies, budgets...
Yeah, the SU budgets.
And any SU hired staff, such as the superintendent, or business office, central office folks. So, there is a budget that's actually looked at for the SU.
This is sort of kind of running all the administrative functions, and are the...
And also, the special education has now been put under the SU budget.
And are the coaches and curriculum?
Literacy coaches, and who else would be in there?
Yeah, so it's, it's grown. Yeah, it's a deeper budget. Central office staff, administrative staff.
So, yes, well...
Do I understand, then, that the town schools do not have policies of their own?
Not exactly. We, there's policies for the supervisory union, and then we all adopt those policies at our district levels.
But not always all. I think Vernon has a couple, has, I don't know how many, but some that are just particular to them. And I think there are a couple that we haven't adopted along the way, but...
So...
But largely, it's the, it's the same.
So, a school, a school district like the town schools can have policy, but chooses not to.
We have to have it. That's our job. I mean, we make the policies.
And the supervisory union policies, though.
Yeah, they generally, well, I have a few more to be concerned with, I'll take it. They generally come through the supervisory union and are heard there, because they affect all of us.
Right. And they apply to all the schools.
Right. Right, so then I'm correct in assuming that the town schools don't have policies specific to town schools?
There may be a few that are specific to the town schools that the other towns would, wouldn't apply to the other towns. I can't think of one off the top of my head.
Okay.
But in most cases, facilities use, and all of those, they're all district-wide. I'll, I'll look it up, but there might be two specific to Brattleboro Town that the other districts don't have.
Yeah, okay.
And in general, these policies come down from the Vermont School Board Association as recommended policies, and language that changes according to changes at the Vermont legislative level.
In some are mandatory.
Yeah.
There's probably 36 policies that are mandatory that we adopt.
And the best thing I've seen since I've been on the board is there is a policy on making policies. Yes. No joke.
I read it, actually, that's why I was asking these questions.
So, there, there's no confusion there. It's all there. And so, the supervisory union meets five or six, maybe?
Four or five times.
Yeah, four or five times a year is about normal. And it's usually, we rotate where they are, and they last about an hour and a half or so. Just like we do, the warrants have to be passed, so looking at the expenditures takes a bit of time, because it's usually quite a long list. And the warrants, we just recently passed a, made a normal procedure for the supervisory union, that all of those warrants for the supervisory union come out to the chairs of the districts, and then I forward them on to you by email as well. And they would, you can look through all of those warrants. If you had any questions, then you would bring it back up through the supervisory union representatives, which are the three people that we need to nominate right now. Of course, anytime you have questions on warrants, you can also just ask the central office. So, three...
Typically, every other month?
No, it's like four times a year.
Four times a year.
Well, Jill, so the supervisory union finance committee does, does need a little more often than the, the board, and they review the warrants and approve on behalf of the boards. So, they're, they're making a recommendation at the supervisory union to approve the warrants on your behalf.
But then we actually vote.
The supervisory union actually votes.
Yep. But there's more scrutiny, is what Frank is pointing out, by, so basically, you take your district board, nominate it up to the supervisory union board, and then there's a finance committee as well that looks at it. So, it's got a lot of eyes that are looking at it. So, are there three folks who would want to be on the supervisory union board? And I guess I'll nominate myself to be on there again. Been on there for a year or so, I think I finally kind of understand what happens. Anybody else wish to be on there?
I'll do it.
Kim? You guys want, a lot of times, people the first year or so just try to figure out the district level, and then, you're always welcome to come to the supervisory union?
Yeah, yeah, I was waiting for three other people to nominate themselves, actually.
You just wouldn't be a voting member.
You wouldn't be a voting member, but you're always welcome to come. So, David, did you want to do it again?
I'm kind of hoping to leave, you know, sort of pull back and let some new people come forward.
All right, so he's saying that he's leaving that position for...
Well, I wasn't on the SU board.
Right, but leaving that position open right now for the two of you.
I mean, if nobody else will, if nobody else wants to, I will.
I'll, I'll do it.
All right. So, then, self-nominated, do we have to have seconds for all of us, or we just kind of...
I just have a second. Anybody want to second those three?
I will.
All right. And I'll, we'll vote on that poll, three as a group?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any problems? No. All right. So, then we, okay, so we still have some committees, and I know that, let's do that afterwards. All right. So, establish meeting days and times, because it's a new board, we always look at this again and say, does this work, and how does that fit into everyone's schedule? We have traditionally gone for the first and third Wednesdays most of the time. In the last year, we haven't always done two meetings, actually, all the time. We haven't necessarily always done two meetings every month. April vacation, for example, is often that third week, so we sometimes skip that, that one. Similarly, we may not get to a second one in December. Sometimes February vacation, sometimes is in there.
Yeah. When we did the work plan this year, we did two in September, the first and third Wednesday, then one in October, November, December. And then when we get into the budget, we did two in January, and then we went back to one in February, one in March. Two in March because of the town meeting report. And then we would typically do one in April, one in May, one in June.
And they don't meet until August.
And always, always with the understanding that in your first meeting of the month, if you decide that you need a second meeting, then you decide that.
And July and August, we schedule each year kind of differently, so it kind of works out with what we feel like we need, and then what, based on what we feel like we need, and when those folks can be there. So, last, last year, I think we didn't do one in July at all, and went for late August, because that worked for when the administrators were back. And we wanted to talk over some stuff with them there, so it didn't make a lot of sense for us to meet.
I was going to take it more in the summer.
So, I guess the first question is if what, and then the timing, we've done five, and then hopefully to 6:30, no more than seven. And that has been good for the administrators in particular, because then they don't have to hang around for so long, and they can go home after that. Does that work into everybody's schedule still?
Yep.
So, we'll leave the meetings on first and third Wednesdays largely.
Well, I'll, I'll put down, it's okay, first Wednesday at 5:00, second, second meeting as needed.
And 5:00.
Yep.
And then we rotate through the schools, so that we get around. For some reason, folks want to be at EES and the air conditioning in the summer.
So, then we have...
Okay, so then committees. So, we don't have a most, or, oh, you have one here. Oh, good. So, Mark filled a bunch of these things that are...
Yeah, I would say finance and teacher negotiations. I know Kim had stood in for Mark on finance, and we're actually trying to get the negotiation team together fairly soon, so I, I think it's important for those two positions to be in one person.
Are you good with that, Kim, continuing on? So, I would nominate you for that, if there's a second?
Second.
And you want to hear a discussion of what happens in that one? Again, so that we know. So, the teacher negotiation, the contracts come up every two years.
Well, depends, this year, it's tough.
So, and the finance committee is the kind of, well, they're supposed to be coming back and telling us at the supervisory union level, right, that they hadn't come back with an exact executive committee motion yet, I don't think.
Right, right.
So, occasionally, there's need for kind of a, an executive committee level of the supervisory union, and that has been traditionally, the last couple of years, the focus of the finance committee. However, we pointed out that that was not exactly their charge, so the last meeting, they were going to talk about that and come back with an actual recommendation, and then we could all know exactly what the finance committee would be working on. But the negotiations come up, and there's another position here for classified staff negotiations, that's a different contract than the teacher negotiations.
So, this year, they're negotiating at the same time, so it probably will be the person that does the certified staff would also do the classified.
So, are you up for that?
Yeah.
It'll be all in the same package, so...
So, we have the motion on the floor. Are we ready to vote, or any other questions on that? All in favor of Kim taking on?
Aye.
Aye. Any questions, or, you look confused, will...
Um, you know, all right, it's a little hard for me to hear.
Do you want to try and...
My hearing's probably about 90 percent, it's not 100 percent.
So, I'm purposely trying to yell a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you pretty good.
Okay, so Ron has...
But everybody there on down needs to be a little, so I miss, so when you go into like a little normal conversation like that, and then you go back...
Yeah, so what I was saying is, the two negotiations, the classified, which is the support staff, as well as the certified, oftentimes, it's separate years, so often we'll have a separate board member on those committees. This year, it's together, and so it would make sense, at least this year, for, let's say, if we have a two-year contract, that Kim, who's doing the certified negotiations, would also be on the classified.
So, you're talking now about the makeup of, of the negotiating team?
Yeah, or the representative from this body.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's composed of one from each of the districts again?
Yeah, yeah.
So, the final question that I said was, because you hadn't responded yet, did you have a nay to Kim being on that position, or were you a yea on that?
Um, I would actually nominate myself as well, having had some amount of experience in that field.
I'd actually was going to nominate, I didn't realize that Kim had been doing it and wanted to do it. I was going to nominate Spoon as well, because of the, he's pretty much responsible for creating the, the finance committee for the town, which has become a really highly functioning group, so he's got a lot of experience with that. I also, Kim, knowing your schedule, I was a little surprised that you could make 8:00 meetings, and then whatever the negotiating ones are, that tend to go on for pretty extensive periods.
When are the scheduled meetings?
Well, the finance committee meetings are usually 5:00 or 5:30 in the afternoon, sometimes 6:00.
The SU ones?
What's that?
I thought they were usually 8:00 in the morning.
No, no, that's Brattleboro, the Union High School Finance.
Oh, I had them backwards. I thought the SU was in the morning and the Union High School was usually in the afternoon.
And the contract negotiation?
Again, probably five.
Where I'm confused is how we, I hear finance committee, and I hear negotiating team. Are they one of the same?
They're not always, but, but in many cases, in Brattleboro Town, they have been the same person.
And the reason I think we've done that is because they often cover similar things and need at the same time.
So, the member from this board that's on the negotiating team normally sits on the finance committee as well for that, to have that information?
Yes.
Okay, I got it.
Okay, so then, we had to have a second, was that basically yours?
Yeah.
Okay.
You still interested in both of those?
And so, and just to be clear, this year, the classified staff negotiation position, that contract is also up, so we're putting this one person on all three of those positions, because they'll be handled around the same time.
Connected, yeah.
Connected. All right, so now we have to decide and vote. Any more discussion? So, all in favor for Kim to hold this position, say, or I guess we'll raise, so we're, we're on an actual vote. So, I'll raise your hands. And all in favor for Spoon? We're splitting down a party line.
First time, gender lines.
Gender line.
Oh, gender, wow. I like it.
And, and he's a lines, too.
What is it?
The septuagenarians are all...
And color, you guys are both in red, so we're really moving. All right. Okay, so we're next is on the diversity, or policy council, I guess is about that. And Kim has been on that, but I think you were ready to let someone else, do you want to say anything about it?
Well, you work, you go to meetings with the policy council for EES, and you work with Deb Gass and her team, as well as parents that are on the board, on the policy council board.
You know what EES is?
Early Education.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. And so, you're working with parents from Brattleboro and from Westminster, because there's the school out in Westminster as well. And you're dealing with, you know, a lot of federal, because it's all a federal program, so you're working with that, and just, it's a similar meeting to like what we have here, but we're just not dealing so much, it's a little bit different with EES and what, what they're doing, retiring teachers and things like that.
And David, I think you were on that at 1:02.
Yeah, yeah.
You want to add it?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a great board, it's a great bunch of people, and you learn a lot about early education.
Yes.
And the effects of poverty particularly.
I would echo that, too, that I spent a year on that board, and I think it's a great way to get, myself anyway, a much clearer picture of what's going on in the town, and what we face as issues. By mandate, the kids that are able to do the Head Start Program by federal mandates are the, the ones who need it the most, and so you end up learning a lot about what's going on, and how the schools are trying to work together to make a difference in that community. So, it's, I found it really, really good to, knowledge to have. Anyone want to self-nominate for that position?
A lot of pressure.
It's not, it's, it's once a month that you meet.
And they feed you?
They, they feed you. You get a, you get a dinner, and meetings are either on Burge Street, or they do, we do rotate, and there are meetings up in Westminster as well, just exit 5. It's right off the highway, so it's super easy to get to, so... Um, I was also interested in nominating myself for the other one you just mentioned, the diversity committee.
That'll be next.
Yeah.
So, you want to hold on?
I'm saving for that. Yeah.
Okay. Spoon, any interest on the policy council?
I'll do it for you.
You'll do it, too?
Yep.
All right, David's nominating, I'll second.
Remind me I did that.
You'll get a email, I'm sure. All in favor of David doing that one?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that brings us to diversity, that's slightly less than a month, right?
Once a month, maybe a couple times. Robin has been attending a couple of meetings anyway.
Yeah.
Including today, so it'd be great if you continued.
That's good, because we haven't had a representative for a little while that has been able to make that meeting, so...
I'll nominate Robin.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so Robin's on. That brings us down to...
Yeah, so these others are...
There's a couple ones here, I'll just read, that I've never even seen anybody doing the time I've been on a board. So, there's one called sabbatical leave and special education, so if we need the representatives of those, we'll do that later. Also, the tax stabilization board for Brattleboro Town, do we have to do that one?
Uh, again, as needed.
As needed. And then there's a capital grant review board. Mark and Todd were on that one before. The town's longstanding practice has been to convene the capital grants review board for review of future operating and maintenance expenses related to new, not replacement, facilities and equipment this committee rarely meets. They do point that out.
It's not just, it's, it's just for new and replacement, and it's only for grants. It's not if we're going to buy something.
So, if you want to be on a committee that doesn't...
That never meets.
Might not meet, this would be a...
Do that one, oh, I'll do that.
Anyone want to put themselves down for that?
Yeah, puts on your resume.
Spoon, would you like to do that one, since you've had the town?
No, but I was thinking, if it rarely meets, we perhaps could wait till the time when it's going to meet, and maybe find somebody to, that'll go to.
Are we required to name it now?
I think, I think the town likes it if they know there's a person on the list.
There we are. The town sent us the official requests over there with the ENS, so... I nominate Spoon for this one.
All right, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, he even voted yes, that's true.
Good.
Um, so then, the facilities and energy committee, we have, we have to have two for this one?
I think it's been helpful to have two.
Well, we do have things going on, too.
Yeah, we do.
So, the facilities and energy, we do have the boiler project going, and there's been, well, there's always projects going. So, David, you've been on that one with Mark for the past...
Yep, yep, for a long time.
Do you want to say anything on that?
Um, well, for a while, it was pretty busy, because we took a while, several months to develop the contract for the solar array that we purchased the energy credits from. It was like the first school or municipality to do that. And then we followed up pretty quickly with a pellet boiler project, two, actually, here, and then now coming in Green Street. So, it has been busy, but now I think it's kind of, Frank, are we kind of just waiting for projects to unfold at this point?
Yeah, we're in the design phase, based on the approval of town meeting, so, yeah, most of the work has been done, that energy audit, mapping out the work in the...
Well, we'd be looking at ways to implement parts of the audit.
Absolutely, yeah, it's part of the spin.
Yeah, so there'll be network. Yeah, it's similar to the town, a lot of the buildings were audited, and recommendations for what to fix and what to improve, and so then, just looking at the return on that, we're going to do those investments and be part of what that committee's going to do as well.
So, I'm thinking, David, you've convinced me that you know what you're doing, so nominating you.
Well, that's usually in the mornings, I can, the dinner meetings are the ones that get me in trouble, because I do most of the cooking.
And we've typically had two people on this, so is there a second nomination for that position? Spoon, would this be something that'd be interesting to you, energy and the...
Well, it's, how often does that meet?
Might not meet much at all.
Not, yeah.
Not much at all.
Probably frequently, yeah.
All right, if you're looking for warm bodies.
Frank said it frequently, so...
All right, so we have a second for Spoon's self-nomination?
Second.
There we are. And all in favor of David and Spoon?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. So, that leaves the Act 46 Study Committee. We have one person who's moved off of it, because Mark is no longer there. It's been Kim and myself, and then David, you've been the alternate. I'd like to nominate you, David, to come on as the actual representative.
No, I can't, Allison will kill me if I miss any more dinners. It's just that simple. I just have to pull back and let other people step forward into those positions, so...
But you have lots of questions and talks.
I do, I do, but I don't have lots of dinnertime meetings. I already have too many, so...
Well, right now, we're down to, what, were we every month or less?
I mean, we have, we have one in May scheduled, it'll probably be once a month.
You're sure once a month is not possible? You're off the solid waste.
Yeah, I know. It used to be, is anybody else interested in that process? It's going to be very interesting, to say the least. Legislature's in the middle of changing the law.
Yeah, pretty familiar one, huh?
And part of what I think is hard about that committee, when it's, why I was saying, Part of what I think is hard about that committee, when it's, why I was saying, David, is just because there's been a lot of work that's been reported back to the board and a lot of work that's been done that will continue to be looked at as anything else comes forward, changes in the law or any ideas that folks have. So it's kind of a steep learning curve, not that you couldn't do it, but that's why I was thinking, David, you're, you're the natural into it, especially since you've been the alternate.
How many people from this board?
We have three.
Three from this board, and all three have...
They're voting members.
Yeah.
All three of the people that were on it no longer are?
No, just Mark.
Oh, only?
So there's only one.
Okay, so there are still two.
Jill and Kim are the two that are on it already.
So I guess the question is, David, you're definitely saying no, or?
Yeah, I, I...
All right, so then Robin and Spoon?
Unless you're, I mean, I'll do it if I have to.
I am just trying not to commit to too many evening meetings myself for obvious reasons. I don't know what that would be.
You're always welcome to come to these meetings anyway, if you're not a voting member, but we do have three voting members and we need to have the three. I don't know, well, it's hard to know what we might be voting on because we're waiting on communication. All right, so I guess that's a self-nominating?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Good.
Okay, so that's the first part of our agenda.
Is contact information down to come up?
So it's a bit of a shock, that first night.
Is all this going to be in the minutes to remind me of what?
You get the meeting, the agendas from Barb, don't worry.
So, did we have any visitors that want to say anything?
No.
No?
Hello?
All right, and then we could start, I guess, by approving the minutes from the last meeting and also the warrants. Might make a little note here about the warrants, just because we have new people and I was confused by it when I came in. So the warrants are what you all, where'd they go? What you've already seen and signed in the case of some of you anyway. And you can go to the central office and they have this lovely packet that you can pull out, look through at your leisure and sign there. They encourage you, matter of fact, it used to be in here, I'm sure they can put it in again, put any sticky notes on here if you have any questions of any specific items. There are some odd things that do come through here. For instance, when I first came on, diapers surprised me, but that's part of having the early Head Start and Head Start program. So you can read through these, any questions you have, you can get answers to before you actually sign off on them. But we need three signatures on the warrants of the five. So typically if we don't have three people that have gone to the central office, we bring them, Ron brings them here and we go through them here. And then as part of the first motions that we do, we do to accept the agenda, the minutes from the prior meeting, which you will have already seen through email as well, and then the warrants, which are all these things listed down here. Any questions on how that procedure works? We also did change the wording a couple of years ago because it, it is very clear that you're just providing oversight, but you can't, it used to say something that made us feel like you were really the ones who were looking at every single penny and that didn't feel right, so. The wording is a little broader than it used to be. If there's no questions, then we need a motion to approve the minutes, the agenda and the warrants.
Spoon?
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Could we get a copy of the agenda?
So you didn't this time?
Oh.
By email before?
Do you usually come through email?
Yes, okay, yes, I did get that email actually.
Okay, so, but that brings, that brings up a next, the next thing that I wanted to make sure we talk about too was just general, and administrators, I'm really sorry that this is such a reorganizational meeting and you guys aren't really getting to talk very much. We wanted to talk about how our normal, the meetings are and then we wanted to talk about how information flows and make sure that that's understood and works. We have typically received all of the, not all the warrants, although we could if we really wanted to see them all, they could be emailed and scanned, we've not asked them to do that administrative task. But we do typically get the agenda beforehand and the minutes beforehand by email.
I'll get the copies.
That works for everybody?
Yes.
And then we also want to talk a little bit, I don't know if we want to do that now or he just took my agenda. So we wanted to make sure we all understood how electronic communications could work in general, but I think that's a little further down, so we can come down to that in a little bit, I guess. But just to talk about how information flows. We have had a board policy, what David probably, three years ago, and we talked about any emails that come to any one of us. So if you're in, in the grocery store or you're, and you have a communication from somebody, you ask them to put it into writing and send it to you, and they have a concern about how much time kids spend in recess or something. Instead of you having to respond to that, you certainly can respond with what you know, but you can also have that email to all of us and then we have one response that comes out typically from me or if I forward it on to an administrator that could better answer the question. But also if there's any concerns of the community that come to you that all of us know then about it. And I'm always clear when somebody sends me an email that I answer back and I'll copy everybody and I'll write at the very top, answering and copying X, Y, Z, so that people know. It just felt, anything else about that, David, and why we put that into practice?
Just so everybody gets the same information, yeah. Yeah, and that there's one, one sort of response and maybe something to talk about in the board or if it, if necessary in executive session, if some contractual or other privacy issues. And then communicate, have, just communicating that.
And speaking about that too, that there is a training coming up from the Vermont School Board Association and it's... Spoon, I see your name on this list already, so you've already registered. This is for Monday, April 10th, so that would be next Monday.
Yep.
At BUHS, you're supposed to register by Friday, two days from now.
My name isn't on that?
No, but this was...
Will it be on the backside?
Oh, wait, I'm on the back. Yes, you're here.
Okay.
So...
Look, I thought I didn't.
Yep, you guys are on here. And this one's on, is this the negotiation one or this is a?
I think it was like introduction to the school board.
It's just funny because it says you can register and then they put the link for negotiations slash workshops, I thought it was a different one, but no, this is the new member, which is really good information. I would actually redo it, but I'm busy that night. Anyway, just to make sure everybody knows about that. So, do you want to jump into any more board stuff so we get that all out of the way?
I actually interrupted the approval of agenda and minutes, do we need to proceed with that now that we have our agenda?
So do we, we had motions, but we didn't, right?
Right.
So anybody have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, there we are, thank you. All right, let's do some of the normal stuff. Go to administrative reports and have the four principals that have been listening just do all this stuff. Mark, you're on the end.
I'll go through my report and then I also have a new hire to present to the board as well. So in terms of the principal report coming around, I actually refer to the back side of the page. Our student senators have been working on a food drive and kind of item drive for the Humane Society. They've visited the Humane Society, met, you know, the animals that are there, and now they've been doing a push at the school. For the last three school sings, they've been recording these public service announcements. So they're really doing a nice thoughtful job. That drive comes to an end on Friday and the senators will be delivering kind of a gift basket to the Humane Society. Our Tulip Truck 5K fundraiser, their one fundraiser of the year is well underway. Our campaign has begun in terms of sending out our letters.
What about your email for the past people? I haven't gotten one yet.
Oh, you haven't, you will. Yep. We're going to get you signed up again.
Yeah, I was the first one left.
Yes. I think we've already taken in close to $5,000, so it's really going quite well. We're in the midst of a T-shirt design contest, so each year we have kids submit artwork that becomes the T-shirt for the Tulip Truck. Michelle's wearing last year's award winner. So the...
You're going to have to put down a drink.
Model the shirt.
Yes.
Don't say we're not entertaining in this board. Modeling and everything.
So the student body will be voting tomorrow and Friday, and then we'll make an announcement next week on the winning design. And then we'll also have some students recording a radio commercial, so you'll start hearing some kids talking about the Tulip Truck on the radio, probably over spring break. Two nights, two Mondays ago, no, two Tuesdays ago, we had Arts Night and it was a really big success. Rachel Mangene is a new art teacher to the school this year, Julie Ackerman-Hovis, a new music teacher, and they, they along with Andy Davis and Samantha Fowler really put together a comprehensive evening. It was really fun, got lots of positive feedback from parents, it was very festive, good combination of artwork and musical performances, so it was a really nice evening. And then last night we had Science Night. And this is the third year in a row we've put together a Science Night in collaboration with Matt Betts, who's a science teacher at the middle school. And we had a sign-up sheet where we asked adults to sign in. We had 136 adults show up for the event, so with the kids, we had close to 300 people in the building last night doing lots of different interactive science experiments. So that is becoming a tradition at Greve Street School and it was a, each year it's gotten bigger and bigger, so that was really nice. And Matt Betts does a great job, super easy to work with, so definitely kudos to him. And then lastly, we have been interviewing throughout the week, last week for a new kindergarten teacher. We had about 25 resumes come in, interviewed eight candidates, which is a lot. Typically try to narrow it down a little more than that, but a lot of good candidates and would like to recommend Allegra Kerrigan for the position. She is going to be a graduate of Upper Valley Educators Institute this summer. She, she blew us away in the interview process, she was really, really dynamic, so we're super excited to add Allegra to the Greve Street community. She's did her student teaching in second grade here at Academy School and is currently in the fifth grade at Oak Grove School. So, super excited to add her to the team.
So, just to let new board members know kind of this process too? That the, typically the hiring conversations go on with the administrators. If it's a position that involves several schools, quite often there's a board member on that committee as well. But if it's just a school-wide position, then it would be done by the administrators. When they make their decision, they bring that person to us. We can ask any questions, review this material, and then we would approve their actual hiring and at that point the person is officially hired. Am I missing anything? And the para staff do not come before us, the paras are officially hired just by the administrators. And one more thing I was thinking of.
Custodians, parents.
Custodians the same way.
Yep.
Lunchroom staff, we don't see any of that. Yes, Spoon?
Is this meeting then the time that this board would have its comments on this, on a hiring, like if it had any at all?
Any questions or comments, concerns?
Right. Can this type of thing be in a meeting packet that would come before this point?
Because they sent the email out ahead of time, yeah.
I really can't ask you all to sit here and wait while I read and think about it.
Yep, that's fine, we could make that, we don't need to make a motion, right? We could just make that a policy for us going forward? A procedure? No, not a policy, because then we have to go through a whole policy thing. A procedure. That's fine, Spoon, good idea? Okay, so at this point, I'd like to happily accept this candidate. I just comment that I've known her as a mom in the schools and worked with her for many years, known her as my daughter's coach too, and it's a pleasure to see that that's the one.
The only comment I would make about that is that if you're only meeting once a month, that could, that could really cost us candidates. So we, we have some way to expedite it if, on those months, like right now we're beginning hiring season and we need a quick response.
When was this actually written?
Well, it's not when it's written, it's when...
When it was decided.
When it was decided.
And that was when?
Friday.
Friday.
On Friday? Well, you're right, that doesn't leave much time, but if you emailed it out Friday night, that would have to be.
That's not the concern. Andy's talking about is what happens when we get into our meetings, only being like in June, sometimes it'll be the first and then we go meeting until August and we may still be hiring.
How can we comment?
So at that point, usually we've entertained a motion and approved the motion typically to have the administrators have the authority to move forward with the hiring and that we would see those teachers after the fact.
I'm going to assume that there's generally little to no controversy on a hiring, so this isn't really a big issue.
No. No, I'm just trying, Spoon, to make sure that you understand as new members...
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, but I think, I think in any situation, if there's like the VSB Code of Ethics is coming up and we're going to get that and then have to read through, I'm going to recommend that we table it for a month so we can read it over and consider what we're, you know, deal with it rather than take time. So I think for anything like that, getting that information ahead of time would be a good idea.
And in general, I think we have sent things ahead of time from a lot of what we've done. So this is, this is a new idea, Spoon, but we can certainly put that in to have that sent out.
Yeah, when it's, when it's practical.
So we were at the...
Sorry, Jeff. I'm thinking, I'm slow to think, you know. So just want to point out that in essence, when we, you know, I think it's a great suggestion, we can certainly do that, send them to you in advance. However, I just want to add that the expectation that we'd have is that that would be in confidence to you at that point.
Could you hear that okay?
This would be confidential.
Yeah, I understand that, it's a hiring.
Yeah, and that can go in the heading to, to...
Right, you could put that in the email confidential so that you remind us, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think I've made a motion, but I don't think we seconded it.
Second.
The motion is to happily accept this candidate.
Yes.
Approve this candidate for hiring. Any discussion?
Happily second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so Allegra. The only other thought I would have is that as we do, we hand these back in.
Yeah, sure, keep it.
If, part, this came up some of the conversations, whether people, if they're switching, say a teacher's at Oak Grove School and wants to switch to Green Street School, does, how does that come forward? And typically that has gone forward through the same process, but it doesn't technically have to, is that right?
Doesn't go to you.
You haven't moved it over?
Doesn't go to you.
We've, we've approved that, when somebody switched from school to school.
No, no, no.
We've done it both ways. Just there.
We have, I've seen it.
Yeah.
You normally have.
I think it's been more of a notification.
Notification, yeah, it's already hired, it's a notification.
Because they're already working within the district in our frat town, but I think it's more of a common notification that there's a staff member moving from one school to another to fill a position.
Good clarification, yes. All right. And the other reason, Spoon, as you're coming on to the Act 46 Study Committee, the reason to mention that is for clarity because that's come up as we talk about a merger and concerns of how a teacher might move from one school to another school. And the concern, you know, for us in Brattleboro, we didn't see that so much of as a concern because we already have different schools. And so folks could just be moved automatically, but somebody would say, well, we're moving you to another spot, we would have that right as administrators in the, in the district, but that has not been the practice ever of just telling a teacher you have to move from Green Street over to Oak Grove. It's always been a position that someone's applied for and gone through.
Is, does the union accept that or is that going to be a...
There's a, there's a procedure in the contract that we need to follow.
Yeah.
For those types of hires.
Okay, so, Andy?
Our monthly report's coming around to you, and I'll let you read that at your leisure. Do want to point out one thing though, front page, just below the halfway point, new entries or students leaving. And there are three students, two different families, and, who left. And all three went to Louisiana, different families. And the reason is, it's interesting is that the, there are families here who work on the bridge. And, because the bridge is basically done. So they have moved to a new bridge project down in Streetport, Louisiana.
It's like a military family life.
And, Andy, can you report on this DCF reports? It's got 38 slash four, can you clarify for us what that is?
Sure, well, there've been 38 reports to date this school year from our school that we know about to DCF. And four of those came this month.
And, I don't know if Robin and Spoon, I wanted to know, so I'm assuming you guys want to know why? What sort of thing triggers that? So, Andy, if you could-
Well, in essence, as you probably know, we're mandated, all school employees are mandated reporters to report suspected child abuse or child neglect. And that's defined by statute. So we do keep track of, of the number of reports we make. Although, the reason I said 38 that we know of is because employees are not obligated to necessarily inform. Like, a teacher, for example, could suspect something, she could make, make out a report. She's not required to inform the administration of that. But generally, people do, so that we're aware of it and can address it. And we also like to keep track of those things.
Who then is the report for?
Who's it for? Well, it'd be on, on behalf of a student who is suspected, that we suspect that was abused by an adult.
To the Department of Children, again.
Oh, oh, I see, it would go directly, not necessarily through the school administration.
Right, by statute now, it cannot go through the school administration.
Oh, okay.
That a, that a person, employee who, who suspects child abuse or neglect is required by law to make the report. What we do in our schools is we ask that they, we ask that that employee informs us so we can keep track of this. But they are required by law to do, to do so. Is that clear?
Yes, I understand. I only thought was, and it's probably not a time to, to talk about it, is why, what's required that the report go to the school administration?
What's not required?
That the report that the teacher makes-
Yeah.
Isn't also required to go to the school administration?
That's, that's a function of the statute, that-
Yeah.
We cannot require teachers to report to us that they made a report.
Yeah, I understand that, I just wondered why. Which you wouldn't know because you didn't write the legislation.
Correct. Also, what came around was that we're doing Willy Wonka, Willy Wonka. And I sent you the performance schedule. And be happy to make sure you have a reserved seat at any of those performances. Really, it's, in all the schools now, we're doing plays and musicals, and it's really fun, exciting for the kids. It's great, a great opportunity for the kids to get up and perform in front of their classmates, community members, parents, and so forth. So, I would encourage you to come to one of those performances. Admission is free, if you give my name at the door.
Do we know Willy?
I was going to sing a couple of songs, in interest of time, I'll skip it. So, and we have a diversity event tomorrow night, and I'll put Mary on the spot and ask her to just share with you, because she's been instrumental in, in bringing it together.
Sure. Our diversity event is the second of its kind. And it's an opportunity for families to come together. This, tomorrow evening's event is going to include children and adults. And it, it's really an opportunity for Academy families to gather together and celebrate, celebrate each other's families, what makes us different, which makes us unique, what makes individual families special, and to honor that and to make some space for that. Tomorrow's event will include a meal. Some of the kids met with some folks from the co-op, and they are being scanned to put together some of the ingredients. So that will take place, and then all children that attend will be able to go home with a book that has some sort of theme dealing with different kinds of families and how each family is unique and special. And during the evening, adults will have an opportunity to read some books that this committee selected that highlight some really important topics and stimulate some conversation. And that will be tomorrow night at 6:00 PM at Academy School.
Is it a one-hour thing?
About an hour and a half. Last time, we, we made about an hour and a half for it, and that was a good time.
So if we had to leave for the BAM's open house for the-
We would welcome any, anyone for any amount of time you'd be able to attend. We'd be happy to have you.
Just to be clear.
Absolutely, good point.
Also, we're in the middle of what I call S-BAC season. This, two weeks ago, we, we started sixth grade. They did literacy and math, they're done. We're now in the midst of the fourth grade assessment. They're working on literacy, next week will be math. Then we go to fifth grade, and then eventually, third grade, into the latter part of May. Another exciting event coming to Academy School, we have Chinese acrobats coming Wednesday, April 12th. Two shows for students and parents and, and all of you are invited as well. That's at 8:40 and 9:40. We had this outfit, these acrobats, five years ago, and they were phenomenal. One of the best assemblies we've done there. They are from mainland China, and it's an amazing performance. And the thing I love about it is, besides highly entertained by, by them, is that our students are just totally entertained, they're just, you know, so engaged. And a lot of our students don't get to see a lot of live things like this. So it's just such a great opportunity for them to experience some professional performers coming to our school. So it's, it's a lot of fun. And last that we, the last week, we had Arts Night here, very similar to, to what Mark mentioned for Green Street. And we did our spring, or end of winter, family special breakfast. And over the three days, we had, we fed 600 people for breakfast. A very dramatic type events, type breakfast, so great, a lot of fun, great turnout.
Kyle, would you have anything? Just going down the line.
Yeah, maybe just a quick update on the capital project. So we are moving right along. I do expect to have a bid package ready for advertising for the heating system that was approved in, at our town meeting.
Did we have to approve anything?
Typically, the board would review the bids and then make the award. When it's more than a $500,000 contract-
We're going to have to approve the wording and the request for proposals and all that?
You, you certainly can if you would like, but no, no requirement to do that? But this is an extension of the energy audit and the, you know, conceptual, conceptual form of the, of the project for replacing the 1929 heating system at the Green Street School. So, you'll see, you'll see some advertisements, and we would hope to have ability to award a bid at your next meeting. When is our next meeting?
May.
May 1st?
Yeah. So if we could add that to the agenda. And we're also making good progress with the USDA grant. There's been no official word yet, but I have had correspondence, and that application's moving right along for the $50,000 request. So, we should have a determination by your next meeting where I can update you on that. Think that's it?
Ron, do you have anything, and you want to test that, and then come back?
Oh, yeah, good.
All right, jumping to them.
So, I have copies of the EES 2016 annual report for the new board members. I think administrators already have copies. And this is sporting our new logo. And you will see that it is dedicated to Ron. And I also noted our, our new mission statement, which is that EES is the first award to open all others. So for new board members, I'll just do a quick notation about the relationship with Early Education Services as it pertains to the board. So, early ed services is the Head Start and Head Start, Head Start and Early Head Start designated agency for all of Windham County. And we are also a designated parent-child center. So we really cover, the parent-child center goes all the way up to Westminster because that's a state-designated region. And Head Start is the federally funded component of the EES, so that means the entire county. So you'll often hear, for instance, the board owns our space in Westminster because the Brattleboro Town School Board is the grantee for the Head Start and Early Head Start program, and EES is your, is how it's delivered. And so, when we were talking about hirings just a moment ago, the, the hiring recommendations and the, and the governance piece of EES is a little bit different. So sometimes you'll hear some nuances that are different. In the Head Start federal mandates, we have a, a policy council, which is comprised of parents and community members, and we always have a seat for the board. Kim, it sits in that seat currently?
Not anymore.
But no.
Just elected.
Okay, we're going to pass the torch?
It's passed back to David.
Okay, so David gets a shot at it, okay. And it's really exciting because it's a way to really work with the parents, be role models for the parents. And we've had, we've had situations where parents actually have moved on to become board members. And they have, by federal mandate, the charge of hiring and firing, if that is the case. Several, most of the staff positions, with the exception of the executive director and the chief financial fiscal person. So those would be recommendations, that, that would be the charge of the board to oversee those hirings. And then, I won't go into a whole lot of detail, much more than that at this point. You'll just kind of, it'll just come as we, as we move along. Those policy council meetings typically happen at the end of the month. And your monthly report gets mailed to you. So I'll need to get the email, your email addresses of the new members to be sure that you're receiving those monthly reports. And hopefully, board members did get a report a week or two ago from our pat, our most recent-
There is a sheet with all of the contact information that's being passed around, did it get done? Maybe you want to, you can't keep it, but you could write it down?
I can copy from it, okay, thanks.
Take a picture of it.
Okay.
Or Kim will take one of me.
So, the, the news from EES is that, and most of this is not new news, it's just updates. April 29th is our Family Fun Day, happening at, at, starting at Bird Street. We have a, a host of events going on in, in several of the classrooms. Many staff members are actually providing the entertainment. There will be lunch and books that will be provided for participants. We are opening this to the community, and we are hoping that people will actually call in to RSVP so we know how many lunches to prepare. There's some conversation about actually encouraging folks to visit Canal Street as well because often, when we are transitioning children from the early Head Start, which is the infant toddler level, mostly those classrooms are housed on Bird Street. We do have an infant toddler classroom at UHS, and we have two infant toddler classrooms in Westminster. But we, we sort of feed the Head Start program, which is primarily housed at Canal Street, and then the two, we have two Head Start classrooms in Westminster as well. It's a big scary leap to go from Bird Street to Canal Street. So there's some discussion about how we might encourage that transition by hosting some part of that day at Canal Street, maybe even setting up lunch there. So folks have to go there if they're eligible. So that's happening, and staff are really involved in planning that and pretty excited about that. We, as you know, we are struggling with some enrollment issues, under enrollment issues, primarily in home base. We have 40 home base slots and 10 consistently are vacant. And for a host of reasons, families are not welcoming us to their doors. And so, I have put together a proposal to move forward, which needs to go through our regional Boston office for approval. I will be having a conversation with our program specialists tomorrow morning about that, as well as some strategies to deal with some vacancies that we have that are sporadically amongst the other classrooms. We, I had a, a special meeting with the teachers on Teachers and Family Support Specialists on Monday to brainstorm ideas about how we might be able to fill some of those gaps. And one of the recommendations that I will be discussing with the regional office is that we'll actually go back to, we're going to expand our program day. This year, we moved from a 7:30 to 4:30 model, which we had been doing for a number of years, to 8:00 to 4:00 so that teachers actually had time away from the children to conduct their administrative duties. And we are, we have collected data that indicates if we could open that back to the 7:30 to 4:30 model, we probably would be not struggling with some open slots at this point. So we're looking at doing that. We, we have stagger, we have some school day slots in our Head Start classrooms so that by 2:30, half of the class go home. Those are primarily for the non-working families. And we're, we are going to push that to 3 o'clock. We also are looking at, in our infant toddler, early Head Start classrooms, we have eight students, eight children. And we're looking, and they are all full day, meaning that they, they attend till the end of the day. Although, again, those families who are not working typically pick their children up much before that time. And by knowing, by having a number, we're designating two per classroom that would be picked up at, by 3 o'clock every day, we can actually do some regrouping at the end of the day so that at least one team of teachers per week would have that time they need to do administrative work. So, because we're, we're dealing with the enrollment challenge, we're also dealing with an understaffing challenge. And as I've said many times, it is a national problem. I just came from Waterbury where I was involved in the, the monthly meeting to develop an infant toddler credential for practitioners who are working in the field of, working with infants and toddlers. And, and the new, you know, the news isn't good. There, there are lots of struggles across the nation in finding early childhood teachers, whether it be to work with preschoolers or infants and toddlers. And that continues. And so, in Massachusetts, the governor just announced raising, using tax dollars to raise the salaries of early childhood educators in the state of Massachusetts. And I'm sure that that will follow throughout the nation because we are dealing with a, with a tremendous crisis, a shortage. And so, that means we have to get really creative at EES. And another piece of the conversation that we had on Monday, actually, this came from the teachers themselves, was, was the suggestion that in every classroom, we are required by state licensing regulations, whether it be early Head Start or Head Start, to have at least two teachers in the room. Now, we have three, because we need three. That third position, we have asked that, that person be a qualified teacher by licensing standards, which is that they would have an associate's degree. We're not required to do that, so the suggestion was that we make that an assistant teacher position. And there would be, like, a person could come in with one college course in, in a road- And there would be, like, a person could come in with one college course in, in, in early childhood in some fashion. And then, we would do mentoring and supervision and actually help that person coach, that person along, coach the person along to actually get their associates. And often, that, those are positions that parents might be interested in. And often, those are the folks who stay with us for a long time. So, that's another part of the discussion that I'll be having with the regional office tomorrow. And I will just, I will defer to Jerry, but I will just say that the work that we've been doing to open our Oak Grove pre-K classroom in September is, in my opinion, going swimmingly well. We have made a great deal of progress and we're in the process now of actually accepting applications for the teacher positions and students for next year.
And so, I brought along the partnership agreement. I will just pass these down. This is partnership agreement that is between EES, Head Start, and Oak Grove School Pre-K. And read it, as Andy would say, at your leisure. But it's, it really looks at what our mutual practices will be, what's services and resources are going to be provided by EES. And then, what services and resources will be provided by Oak Grove. So, that's what this, we just wanted to be able to share this with you so that, get it.
Is this kind of necessary with the federal guidelines too?
Yes. So, like Deb was saying, we just met again this past week, finalized looking at job descriptions for the three positions that will be in this collaborative pre-K classroom. So, the three positions will be licensed and they're all out on schools from now. So, there's a licensed lead teacher that's licensed from the state of Vermont in early childhood education. There, we are calling a Head Start teacher because Head Start has different names for their, their teachers than we do in a public school. But that would be what we would more or less consider to be like an assistant teacher. That individual will hold an associate's degree, possibly higher than that, but at least a minimum of an associate's degree position. And then, the third individual will also, we're asking for an associate's degree. And that person will specialize in social skill development and behavioral management. So, again, three adults that will be in that classroom. And our goal is 15 students, seven Head Start slots and seven to eight non-Head Start families.
Question?
Please, of course.
What is the starting pay at early education in January?
Well, we have tiered, different, as Jerry's saying, we have different tiers.
Yeah, steps.
And so, I would say an average is about $12 an hour. And they have to come with college degrees.
So, there's a lot of turnover?
Yes. That's a Head Start, yes.
Could you say a little bit about, for me, a little bit more about why this is happening? Because staff salaries are obviously a part of it.
About why?
Why we're doing this in school.
Okay, so.
Is that fair to ask?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
So.
Two years ago, we, let me just start.
Yeah.
Yeah, two years ago, we were thinking, you know, with the changes in Head Start numbers and rules, that it would be great to have a pre-K classroom, a blended classroom of Head Start and non-Head Start students in the schools. We actually talked to Andy about it and because of space constraints, we didn't move forward with that. But after talking to Jerry, we felt like we did have a classroom space that would be appropriate. And then, we got Deb involved and Jerry and other people, Lyle's been very involved with this. And just kind of looking at mapping this out. A lot of research shows that there are many benefits to a pre-K classroom being in a school. We've done this at Putney Central for over 10 years. Vernon has just moved their private town pre-K program into the school, into a school classroom. Transition is much easier for students in those situations. And I think what we're hoping for is, well, actually Guilford is actually initiating that as well. So, we're hoping that, you know, we can, we can, at least for the four-year-olds, relocate those classes into our school buildings. And so, I know there's going to be some work done at Academy that may allow us to use a space. I'm not quite sure about Green Street, there might be some possibilities, but that's, that's the long-term plan.
And if I can just add to that, I am really excited about this opportunity because we obviously deal with the neediest of the needy. And when you have all of those children, you know, who are, you know, dealing with a lot of crisis in their life and they're traumatized, all in one group, it's really challenging. And so, this is a way of really having a better representation of what our community looks like. In that we'll have a mixed, you know, income level classroom enrollment that's more reflective of what happens in schools. Rather than having highly, a highly concentrated amount of challenged, challenging behaviors.
Is this, just out of curiosity, what is the path for these kids when they reach kindergarten age? Are they going to all stay at Oak Grove? Or are they going to be like the rest of the town kids and just go wherever they get assigned?
Well, you know, that's, I'm glad you asked that because at one point, that was kind of what our, our initial thinking is that this would be like for a cohort for Oak Grove students and be able to move on. But then, as, you know, going through the planning process, we realized that some students may choose to stay at Oak Grove, especially if they're siblings, as for, if they have siblings in the school, that's kind of a natural placement anyway. But we, but we know that it's, there might be some other students that are like in Head Start right now whose siblings go to Academy, but would be best to come to Oak Grove. And so, they would naturally go to Academy as well. So, there'll be some students that will stay and then others that will go to either Green Street or Academy. So, it's really exciting. So, we're meeting, like, you know, the job descriptions are done, the job postings are out there. They close, I believe, like April 19th, something like that. And so, as soon as we come back from vacation, we'll be taking a look at those applications and starting the interview process. It's pretty exciting. Oh, I forgot, I have also a general report.
Jerry, what's going on? Just curious, is, are the, the social skills and behavior specialists, is that, is there any overlap between the training that our people who do that and the preschool?
These are essentially step pairs.
Step pairs.
And it's not a different, different training for preschool for the younger kids?
Yeah, no, it's great because it fits perfectly with what we're doing throughout the district.
You can steal somebody's parent.
It's something we've.
I try not to steal.
She tries not to steal, she said, and then she looked this way.
But, you know, my, but I have a B CBA, a board-certified behavior specialist in my school. And that person will be available for consultation, some observations to help with the pre-K classroom as needed and to help with that para-educative weapons to be in there. So, our Arts Night is tomorrow night, starting at 5:15. We have our instrumental music program starting, followed by our all-school concert. And then, our, our gallery walk right after. So, really excited about that, 5:15 to about 6:30. Other things that, on our parent and community events, we did have our, our drum performance, first part of March. We also, Mary was talking about her diversity, her family diversity dinner that you, is it tomorrow? Yes, tomorrow night. So, I had a group of, of parents who also wanted to meet and talk about a family partnership or meeting around diversity and inclusion. We've met several times about what does that look like, what's our overall goal. Our first meeting, which, you know, when you have a, a meeting with parents, that's like, oh, you know, come, family partnership meeting, if they're like, oh, is that? So, you're not sure how many. We were pleasantly surprised, we had 16 people show up. We had, we did have pizza, so food always helps. And we had childcare available as well. So, we have another meeting coming up. And it's really to, to initially talk about what does inclusion mean? What is it, what does it look like in our community? What does it look like in our school? And if there's any suggestions moving forward. So, right now, we're still very much in an infancy, infancy stage of just trying to kind of gather and, and, and talk about what community feels like. So, we're really excited about that. And then, I'll just, keep it brief, so I'll just let you also know that during spring vacation, Thursday, April 20th, the, our first responders, emergency responders here in, in Rattown will be using Oak Grove as a crisis simulation event. There will be letters, I believe, not from my end, but from the community end, being sent to all the neighborhood homes, because we're definitely in a neighborhood, and to let them know that there'll be a lot of action happening at school on the 20th. So, I've already told my teachers, please do not come to school that day, to work. You need to actually take a vacation day. So, also, in case any of you hear of anything afterwards, like, oh, my gosh, what's going on? If you get phone calls during the day, that's what's happening.
I'd just add, this, this is kind of the ongoing cooperation that we've had with Brattleboro Police Department and the Fire Department and Emergency Services that have worked very closely with us on school emergency protocols. And we've done a couple of exercises like this. And so, this will be the first one at, I want to say at an elementary school, but maybe we've done another. But this will be a good drill.
Okay, so. Yes, go for it, Andy.
Yep.
No, not me.
Sure. Andy, hand me a letter down. I would ask that the board, possibly with regrets, perhaps, accept the resignation of Sam Fowler, who is our band teacher at all three schools.
I just heard about this before I came and I definitely have regrets. So, this puts us into hiring again for these positions. We've had two-year tenure for the last two, right?
The last two have been in for two years, yeah.
And they have not left, just to be clear, because they didn't like us. They've both left, at least I understand from this one too. It's a family situation of finding something closer to home or having to move because of a family situation.
Yeah, I think one of the challenges is being in three schools. That's, that's a big challenge. There's just tons of communication, been in three different schools. So, it's, it's no music teacher's dream to be an elementary band teacher in three schools. So, that's, that's a big challenge.
Well, the vocal music teacher was in H or something, right, before she came? So, she went and actually moved down the list. And so, we need to put together a committee to search?
I think Jerry, Andy and I need to have a conversation.
You've just barely heard this, right?
Yeah, exactly, so.
Okay, so.
We'll advertise on school spring very quickly and.
And then, typically, as I was saying to the new board members, typically, this would be the type of position that often a board member is a part of because it's, we do still call them itinerant. Yes, they call them on the, on the financial stuff, we'll see itinerant staff. And that's the people without a home, I guess, the ones that move without, within three. So, we need a motion to accept with regret that actual resignation letter?
It's removed.
Second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
So, as a new board member too, I ask, why would we bother accepting with regret someone's letter? Because obviously, if we don't accept it, does that mean we don't get to leave?
We tried.
So, remind us.
Well, by statute, you can't hold somebody in the position. So, it's just a formality to give you notice that the person is leaving or something.
But it also establishes a clarity that, yes, that person really did give up the job in case they wanted to come back or something.
They're fired or something.
And then, sometimes that's led to a discussion for us of, is this a position we want to talk about later on during the budget process? Or at that time, is this an automatic rehire? Is this a position that we need to be looking at? That letter should come back down to Ron, wherever it is.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's in front of me.
So, would you care to appoint, to have someone join, you know, get a name? Because the board, I mean, again, it ain't no one.
So, is there anyone who would like to be on the hiring committee?
I am.
Who would like that? Ron. All right, so, moving on to act unfinished business. The first one on the agenda is the Act 46 update. I honestly have not heard anything new at all since we have last met as a town meeting.
Yeah, I think the, the only thing that I can report again is the study committee did send a letter to the Agency of Education and the State Board of Education requesting a time to, to meet and discuss some of the alternatives, some of the options. We heard back from the Agency of Ed, they're willing to do some work with us. We have not heard back from the State Board. They, they just recently, recently reorganized. So, I would suspect we'll, we'll hear from them soon. I did make copies of the articles, just so knowing that new board members may not have had these. And I figured, if I'm going to give those out, I might as well make them up, make a copy for everybody, so. Yeah, I know, but.
Any questions from anybody at this point on Act 46? And Spoon, you would want to know when the next Act 46 Study Committee meeting is scheduled for?
Okay.
Since you're on that now.
I think it's May?
May 4th, is it?
May 4th, yes, in Guilford.
Guilford, at 6:00.
It's a Thursday night. And David, as the alternate, I won't be able to be there, so if you wanted to go to that one.
May 4th?
May 4th, Thursday, 6 o'clock, right?
May the first speak with you, Dave.
6 o'clock Guilford. And usually, there's supper with that, Spoon. All right, so town meeting, town representative meeting, any follow-up from that? I think we put this on basically to see if there's any questions that came up or anything that we thought that the board wanted to put onto our agenda because of any discussion that was at that meeting.
It seems like it was a year ago.
I know.
The one thing that I remember being brought up at the meeting was about the pursuit of alternative structures under this. And I, I just wasn't clear on what, is that the thing that they're trying to do now? Or is it waiting to see what the state recommends us to do? Or is that kind of the same thing?
That's a good question. So, if you want me to answer that?
Yeah, I can, you have the whole question.
So, it, the question Robin's saying is alternative structures. And it's a good question because when the law first came out, there was wording calling it preferred. And then, everything that was a merger that they had listed out was an alternative to the very first options of preferred. And then, later on, they've kind of switched that so that the alternative is yet another option that's not listed on the first alternative.
Okay.
So, I think that's a large reason why it becomes a question that people are like, well, who's really saying what when they're saying that? So, right now, the study committee's official last action was to send off the articles or agreements that you have here up to the State Board and say, we're kind of at an impasse here, what would you suggest? Do you have any recommendations? And so, we're waiting to hear back first from the State Board.
And as an example, there is legislation pending, I think it's Senate Bill one twenty-two, that has an impact on the Vernon withdrawal, withdrawal from the BUHS district that each town needed to, to support, Dummerston chose not to. So, that legislation may, if that passes with the Vernon piece in there, they would not require each board to release them.
Each town.
Each town. So, that may have an impact in terms of the study committee work.
So, that would just allow us to merge with Guilford, Putney and Dummerston and not Vernon, even though Dummerston voted against?
Right, well, it, it would allow us probably to have a vote. Vernon was not expected to be in the merger since last August, when they, as a town, voted out. But it probably would allow, depending on the timeframe, a vote of all the towns related to these articles.
Okay.
And so, the, and that S one twenty-two, I don't know, Spoon and Robin, are you getting legislative updates already from the Vermont School Board Association?
No.
You have to send, you have to send the email.
When we get, when we get that contact information. Yeah, yeah, I actually read through one twenty-two once, kind of quickly, and I got a, an idea, but I'll have to.
Well, it changes, though.
Have a little bit more closely.
As it goes through committee and such. So, what you read one day is not.
Is still not.
But the, that's why I was asking if you're getting that. So, we'll get, Ron sends that up to the Vermont School Board Association, and they will start sending you legislative updates?
I'm getting stuff from them. I can't quite recall whether I got legislative updates.
Yeah, so I think it's passed the House, but not the Senate.
But I know we're in a bit of a quagmire, because the, some of, Dummerston, you know, we want to be able to look at alternative models, but we can't dissolve the union because Dummerston didn't allow Vernon to go out. So, we're not allowed, you know, we can't, we're, we can't merge in an alternative because we can't dissolve the UHS number six.
I see.
So, because Vernon won't, won't warrant any type of merger, we can't do any type of merger because Vernon said absolutely not. And because Dummerston did not allow Vernon to leave, we cannot dissolve the UHS number six. So, that's why we're in.
We're waiting.
Yes.
If somebody else has an answer.
And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to ask Jill, if you happen to know whether, when it, you think that it went, or you know that it went from the Senate to the House?
No, I think it's the House going to the Senate.
The House has it. That's what I thought it was.
All right, then I'm remembering wrong.
Did the House make changes?
They're, they're making changes as we speak.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And what we, what I saw from the legislative update didn't even talk about Vernon in a way that I could find in that update. So, if, if you've been following it more closely, David, I don't know.
Well, there, I think there are two bills. One is Mike Hebert's bill, which was separate, that he's hoping we'll get a hearing in the committee, and that's just.
So, that hasn't moved at all?
I'm not sure. I, I can't see. And then there's another attached, there's something attached to one twenty-two that might have the same effect. Do you have a more recent? One twenty-two had, it didn't state Vernon, but it had. Yeah, it said. It had the language that would cover Vernon. Yeah, way down at the end sometimes, unless there's one.
We have Valerie Stewart on the House Education?
No, she's on the Congress.
Oh, that's right. Do, do we have anybody on House Education?
I don't think so, no. That, that was, but that's issue.
She's on Senate.
I'm sorry, she's in Senate. Was there anything you were looking?
And I would just add that in, in this packet, certainly for new board members, if, if you look at, you know, you'll, you'll see all the articles in the first few pages. But when, once you get page, past page eleven, there are these charts that I, I hope you look at, because these are the program overviews for all of the schools, the things that the study committee, along with boards and administrators, have gone through to show, these are some of the program options in certain schools, and they don't exist in other schools. And then, and that's, I think, a two-page document. Maybe three. Yeah, it's actually three pages. And then a couple of pages past that, there's this other spreadsheet that looks at program, expanded opportunities, expanded program opportunities. So, again, I would hope that you get a chance to look at that. And, you know, this is the work that the study committee has done for, over a year and a half. And I would just ask, if, if you kind of keep this with your board book, bring it to meetings, I'm not sure how much we're going to work, work on this, but it'll be good information. If you have questions, we can go through it and spend some time on it. And I'm not going to make fifteen copies every time.
So, I guess that, for me, is all on Act forty-six, and then we move on to the next agenda item, which was the town representative meeting, which I, actually, I think we moved on to, moved back to. So, is there anything else from town representative meeting that felt like we needed to follow up on? I don't think so.
No, it went very smoothly and quickly.
And so, one of the things, following right close to that, is the discussion that our board had back in, say, January, I think, about hosting a community forum where people could come in and, and hear more about what a trauma-informed school was like and what we were doing in our schools. And we decided to table the discussion of whether we needed to have that community forum until after town meeting, because a lot of what we talked about at town meeting also dealt with some of that, but not really specifically trauma-informed.
Yeah, and I would ask Lyle and the principals to jump in here, because I know they had a discussion about this yesterday, thinking about, you know, where we are with that topic, so.
So, as Ron just said, we met yesterday, include the principals, but also including Shelley Wilson, who oversees our behavioral staff program, and Paul Smith, who oversees professional development. And we're still in the process of working out professional development around trauma, the best, what would be best for our teachers. So, our recommendation is not to move ahead with this at this time, that we would prefer to wait until we really have some more firm plans in place of how we're moving together, how we're moving forward as an SU with actually training ourselves and our teachers.
Okay. Board members have any questions on that? All right, so we'll kind of table that for a while. How, when would you like it to come back up at our August work?
Sure, that would be a good time to talk about it, and we can look then, by then, we'll know what we have in place for professional development.
Okay. Before we move on, because this, it's not exactly part of the trauma-informed school, but we were talking about community forums, and you had talked several times about coming back, inviting the, the preschool people back to talk about where, what we come up with. And it's basically a commitment we made to them. And I think we need to do that, not, you know, before next year, before everything is already in place.
Okay.
Although it is kind of already in place.
I was going to say, I thought we kind of did that with the town meeting, the community forum with the town meeting reps and talking about it, but we didn't.
Well, in a sense, but we, we made a very clear commitment to the people in the room that we would keep them informed as we went along and, in terms of what the process was. Because there's a, a lot of overlap compared to what the state's doing, nowhere near as much.
So, do you think it needs to be a, a complete community forum? Or couldn't we announce it at our regular board meeting and say we're going to specifically talk more about that and invite people for questions?
That would be fine. I think there's a list of people.
Make sure they're invited and such.
That Lyle kind of kept in, in the loop, and you'll contact them again and ask them to, to spread the word.
That's a good, good idea.
Yeah.
So, we'll make that kind of expanded board agenda item for May?
Well, that's what we got for May.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that. What else is on the work plan for May?
Kindergarten placement, class size readiness.
Oh, good. We're talking about kindergarten, let's go up then, anyway.
One more, one more thing, Jill. In talking about having a forum, that's a, you know, it's a little bit of a bunch of work putting together and having, and just probably expenses. And it seems like any meeting, particularly a forum, but, but any meeting at all works better, more effectively, if the people coming in already have some information, some, some knowledge of the subject. And I thought, as you were, could, I mean, I mean, it appeals to me if there was something written about what a trauma-informed school was, what the issue was, maybe a quarter of a newspaper page and put into both of the local papers before, so that the public has a chance to look at it, think about it, wonder what it is, ask questions, maybe a lot of them will get answered right there. So, by the time they come into the forum, you, right off the bat, you're having a more in-depth or more useful discussion.
So, good, good suggestions if, when we look in August at whether we want to do the trauma-informed school forum at that time. Let's see if we can all remember that. In the case of a preschool forum and pre, and preschool in the school, I don't know if it's too of a, it's not a real nebulous question.
Well, I forgot to mention this, and so, like, there's a, this is an example of, of a community preschool forum. It's called Getting Preschool Right.
Yes, I have that up here, too.
It's happening next week. I'm attending, this is for obvious reasons, as I'm going to now be a principal of Pre-K. So, it's next Wednesday, April twelfth, at the retreat, right?
And this is really something that was promoted by Building Bright Futures. And the, the, the questions are, how do we build bridges between preschool and elementary school? How does early learning support quality K through twelve education? What are the benefits of a mixed delivery system with Pre-K? How are families supported and engaged in Pre-K and K-12? And so, my suggestion would be that if we could have strong representation and do what David was saying, we, we've done the forum.
Just invite people to this already being held.
This is how we could do it. And I plan to be there.
Yeah, we, we attend with the community, is already set up for, so.
So, what do you think, David? Would that do what we promised to do?
Um, I, I don't know what the, so, I mean, I haven't really talked to anybody, know what the expectations that people have. I just know what we had committed to. I think if that's, it's going to be a lot, a lot of the same people. So, will you be talking about what's, the way, the, basically an update for everything that's happened?
Yes, we can do that. Yeah.
So, it kind of feels like, David, you're still thinking a board member needs to be there, so it feels like, because we promised we were going to.
Yeah, I guess, I, I, what I'm, I'm more concerned about, gee, you said you were going to tell us and, and, you know, and keep us informed, and now this thing is all done, and holy cow. But I'm not sure why anybody would, would, I mean, I, I'm not familiar with the, the field and all the people in the field. I just know there was.
I hear you.
We made a promise to keep people informed all the way.
I think it would be great if a board member were there.
But we did do continual updates and discussions during the meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
But it would be, this would be a reaching out. So, April twelfth, who could be there?
What time is it?
Six to eight.
Well, I've already got it in my calendar.
Six to eight at the, at the retreat.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I know.
So, David, you're going to be able to be there?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's at night, right?
No. Oh, six to eight at night.
We don't have a meeting at night.
Okay.
Another dinner update.
Nothing else on unfinished business? Moving on to new business?
Could we do capital project bank account first?
Ron wants to make a slight change, unless anyone's upset with that idea of moving B in front, so capital project bank account, if an action needed, do that first.
Sure.
Great, so just asking for approval of a bank resolution to create a checking account, so we can disperse funds for our capital project that's been approved. So, that's simple. It requires a board approval and then board chair signature.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
So, Frank, who will be, will you be the only person assigned?
It would be, as far as authorized signers, it would be myself and Ron and Lyle.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I am.
Aye. All right. Keep going, sign.
Yes, thank you, two.
Okay, so now we'll come back to the Vermont School Board Code of Ethics. And I just wanted to start us out so that we all have that, because it's different. Well, not different, but I mean, it's a different board. So, I just wanted us to review it so we all don't have surprises, we know what we're doing. Where am I saying?
There you go.
So, just go ahead and pass it. Frank, I'll show it.
Yeah.
That one's done. There's a check?
Yes. You just, you're, you're kind of reading.
Just a lot of labels for that school.
Yeah, I, once they get, I think, there's enough copies. Is there a copy for public? And I know David talked about not signing off on this tonight. I do want to spend a little time reviewing this document. So, this is something that we have boards sign off on probably every other year. There, there was an incident that happened this year with a, a different board member that, that caused us to come together as a supervisory union board and say, you know, we really need to make sure that we do spend some time on this code of ethics document. And so, I'll give you a chance to read sections, but I'm just going to hit some highlights. First paragraph, as a member of my local school board, I will remember that my primary concern must be the educational welfare of students in my district and excellent return on investment for taxpayers. I agree to conduct myself in accordance with the following commitments. And they talk about the act within the scope of my official role. And I think some of you that are attending this session next week will, you know, have reinforcement on this. Recognize that a board member's responsibility is to see that schools are, are well-run, but not to run them. Act only as a member of the board and not assume any individual authority when the board is not in session, unless otherwise directed by the board. I think that's a really important ones to, one to highlight, that you're not assuming responsibility as an individual, that it would be directed by the board. So, there are certain things that the board will say, okay, so, if you're interested in this area, then you'll be the point person for the board to explore these things. And, and, you know, oftentimes, we'll have committees to work on that. The next bullet, give no directives as an individual board member to any school administrator or employee publicly or privately. Avoid making commitments that are, that may compromise the decision-making ability of the board or administrators. The next section, it's all about conflict of interest or perceived conflict of interest, so I'm not going to spend much time on that, but you can clearly take a look at this. The last section that I want to spend some time on, respect my peers, my constituents, confidentiality considerations. This first bullet, voice opinions respectfully and treat with respect other board members, administrators, school staff, and members of the public. That's one that we got, we ran into some trouble with an individual. And it created a, an investigation that we needed to hire an attorney, did some fact-finding.
Again, not with this board, but with the supervisory.
Again, not with this board, with, with another board member. And came up with a, a kind of a ruling in terms of the behavior. The second bullet applied to this, maintain confidentiality of information discussed, conducted an executive session, and uphold applicable laws with respect to the confidentiality, confidentiality of student employee information. This was also a case where a board member was recording executive sessions on his phone and actually using it for his private use. We have cases when we have executive session where we don't necessarily record the details, but in some cases, you need to. But those are the, those are the domain of the board. They will go to the clerk, and that's it. You know, any sort of recording would be erased, you just don't keep that. So, that was an issue that we needed to deal with. And then attend all regularly scheduled board meeting insofar as possible. So, I would ask you to kind of take a look at this, and then if you'd like to come back at the next meeting, if you have questions, we can answer those questions. And then what we would like to do is have you sign off on the actual document that we keep with the board book. And if you have questions now. And if you have questions now, certainly we'd like to, yes.
Actually, it's not, all of these things are pretty standard. I do know from a lifetime of experience that from time to time you run into something which doesn't quite fit, but that doesn't worry me. What I found interesting, as I, right up at the very top, as a member of my local school board, et cetera, I will, that phrase, excellent return on investment for taxpayers. Wondered what, how a student becomes an excellent return, that's a funny.
Yeah, I know.
It sounds like, I don't know, we're planting a student in the ground and hoping that two will grow, or...
I don't know, it makes me think of one of the things we talked about in our last meeting, right before the town representative meeting, where the investment that we're actually asking taxpayers to make in the extra programming, such as tutoring and after-school, the kindergarten SCAM program, or the, what's that, Dave?
Human services.
Human services, the social workers, that, that those are having direct effects on how well the kid feels about being in school and his success in school, and his ability to do such things as read and write and math and things. And so that actually has a return on investment that you can look at, as in, if we don't do some of these things and the child ends up going off to an out-of-district placement that costs us hundreds of thousands, perhaps, or that later on in society, that statistically you can look and see where the child has a higher proclivity of ending up in jail, or, there's a lot of statistics. So, it's a funny phrasing, but actually it makes me think back to our social worker discussions in my town.
I wouldn't want people to think it's kind of a widget mentality, that, you know, here we are, putting the investment in, and we get out these, you know, successful widgets, students. I think of it as the balance between excellent programs that cost money and the commitment of the town to support those, but with a balance towards what we can afford as a community. And I always think of that, I think about, we've been very successful in this district through the supervisory union to make a financial commitment to programming that will really have great outcomes for our students, but we have to balance that with what the community can afford. And I think that's, that's how I read that section.
I think you could also consider the return on investment to be measurable effect of whatever the programming is. Are these things actually successful, or did they just sound good and then we spent money for no reason?
Right. In fact, I have, and maybe I'll save it for next time, I do have a packet from the School Board Association with key sections.
We handed everything out today.
Well, you have to promise to bring it back. But, so I'll do.
Actually, I gave them copies of your search work, and I'll get another one.
Well, I didn't, I didn't do the whole book.
I gave them copies.
He gave a, neither of them.
There were certain sections that I thought applied to those, those in particular, so I'll, let me keep a few over here.
This is really not what our homework needs to like.
I would have worked my book, but I felt like it would make me look like such a newbie that I was going to bring it.
And, so I'm just going to highlight the pages that I thought applied to this document, and then your homework will be to take a look at it, but also bring it back.
He hasn't been in the classroom for a few years, so he really can't resist.
Why do I teach a class at the high school?
Oh, that's true. Have to get a lesson.
So this heading for chapter two, Effective Education Governance: Overview of Essential Roles and Responsibilities, those two pages, pages 14 and 15, I think are important. Robert, what you were talking about is page 31, Monitoring Learning Outcomes, and I think this board has done a really good job. I think the administrators and teachers and staff have done a great job looking at assessment results and data and putting the resources where we need to, to have good student outcomes. And the board has always been supportive of, you know, looking at that and spending time with that. On page 55, I think it's, it's 4A, Board Chair, it's got some information about the school board, the chair, building a team, building a board agenda, effective meetings, follow-up work with the community. And then the last section, page 67, indicators of an effective board. We do a self-evaluation. I was thinking that this spring, probably wait until May or June, do that again. Have you kind of, there's some guidelines that you follow and you check off how you think you're doing, and then you have a chance to review that as a whole group. With a new board, I think that will be important to give you a little time before we do that self-assessment, but those are some of the indicators that we look at. So I would just say, take a look at this as it relates to the code of ethics, and then next time we'll come back and have questions and signatures if you feel like you support it. Okay?
So that's also covering the review of expectations and rules.
Kind of.
So, the one thing that I would say that we didn't, that's not directly in here that we wanted to make sure we talked about, was electronic communications.
Yep.
And because that's come up over time, it's just, it's terribly easy to send things as electronic communications through email, and I actually had a conversation with the Vermont School Board Association, and their recommendation is that we, everything that comes to all of us, it kind of goes against what I felt was right, but my thought was, okay, if you put it very clearly who all this is to, then you're being very upfront, and people can always see that. But their comment is, their best practice recommendation would be for anything that's sent out by any of us to the whole board would be in a BCC, a blind copy, and that reasoning is because then you cannot hit reply all, because once you hit reply all, any of those discussions would be illegal. So...
Wait a minute, why would they be illegal?
Because, okay, so, just as an example, a discussion starts out by saying, here's some information on, what's, S-122, that's just going around or something, so, you know.
Can you think of a school-related one, because legislation is a different thing.
Well, legislation's the same thing.
Well, here's an example. If, I just, you were just talking about trauma, and I just listened to a podcast, a radio program, and there's a podcast, and it's about brain research and trauma, it's really, and so I'm going to, you know, as soon as Lyle said they're working on PDFs, I'm going to send her a copy of it. I was going to send it to everybody. And if I send it to everybody, that means that more than one person has this information, it's going to be on our agenda. If you reply all, that means that we've started the conversation, and if it were just, if, like, I send it to everybody and you just, you replied to me, that's two of us, and we can do that. Once a third person's involved, it's a meeting.
It's a quorum.
And you're breaking open meeting laws.
And that breaks open.
Okay, because it's a private, secret communication between the school board that's not.
Right, that's not, yes, right.
But you can still have a conversation between two members of the board, which is not everyone together.
Right, right. But you can't seriously, we couldn't talk about something, and then I'd go and talk to Kim about it.
But it's not the best practice to have lots of conversations between two people, and, I mean, the more open and transparent and that it's in the conversation in front here, but, David, I'm not sure if I understand what you're saying, because Nicole's here was, the law prohibits any discussion of the business of the board outside of a warned meeting. And under the law, this is a quote from her, "Under the law, my view is that issues and questions surrounding school district governance and the implementation of Act 46 constitute the business of both the supervisory union and the local boards." So, any law that would be dealing with mergers of S-122 or something.
Yeah, yeah.
So if we sent out, just, you know, here's a general information, then everyone can look it up and look at that, that's fine. It also is against the law to start giving opinions on it and trying to...
Well, and that's the reason I didn't want to use that example, because I got a different opinion, which was from an attorney, that that falls right into the, it's right in the middle of the gray area of Act 46, because if it's not on our agenda, it's not business, and we don't have to, and we've voted about Act 46, but it's just been a straw poll, it hasn't been a real decision in terms of the way it affects it. So, she may be right, she may not be right.
Well, we did vote.
But there are examples that we can use, so that we understand the process, is the response, the reply to all stuff.
Okay, so I got a couple, a couple of questions on what you're saying, though. But we did vote as a board to send the Act 46 thing. So we have not just always done consensus, we've actually had votes.
Yes.
But, and I'm not clear still as to why you think that Act 46, or what you're saying is not...
The business of merger is all in the 706B committee, which is a legislative body that has its own rules. And we can't, I mean, the Agency of Education said that Vernon couldn't take their personnel, they said, or you can't leave once you vote somebody in there, so we don't have any, any relationship with it after that. We don't put, if there's a vote, it's not the school district that puts that on the ballot, it's the study committee. So that's why, you know, that's the gray area about that part.
So, so who's the attorney you're talking to, or why would?
Dave Kelly, he's the attorney in Hartman.
And so he, I just, why would...
He said, there's a gray area if it's not really on your agenda, you can't just say anything having to do with governance.
And so you're contacting that attorney on your own?
Yes.
Again, this is a question that comes back to the board, the ethics question, whatever, so on your own to figure out for your own desires, to understand...
To understand the range of the law.
Because I, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm glad I chose not to be a lawyer, but she, when I've asked this question specifically, she says, and I'll just read this, she says, with respect, and this was a question that we were, that David and I were having, so, with, and it's not because it would be a quorum, this is only gone to David and I, and then with the copies to the administrators, and a copy as well to Alice as the chair of the Act 46. So, maybe I should take it all the way back, David, your original question, see if I can go, I don't know, the original original question, but was, is back on 706 Study Committee, if it can engage in the types of activities described in Section 9 of Act 46. And that's the alternative, the secondary alternatives that we were talking about. And her answer is, "I would like to first call your attention to Section 5 of the law, which defines an alternative structure. This section is the one that gives guidance to the State Board regarding the approval of an alternative structure," quote, or in parentheses, "supervisory union." It states that a supervisory union may be able to meet the goals of the law, particularly if it satisfies certain conditions. One of the conditions, C3, states, "The supervisory union has the smallest number of member school districts practicable, achieved whenever possible by the merger of districts with similar operating and tuitioning patterns." So in a supervisory union that has districts with similar operating patterns, Act 46 explicitly contemplates the merger of like districts, which is the work of a 706B Study Committee. The language of Section 9 states that districts may submit a proposal alone or with a group of districts. If there is a district in the supervisory union that wants to submit a proposal on its own, then working with the 706B Study Committee does not make sense. However, if the idea that representatives from across the SU will meet to discuss which type of proposal to submit to the State Board, one where some districts merge and others retain their governance structure, for example, then the 706B Study Committee is the appropriate place to have those conversations. Section 9 explicitly contemplates that a proposal may include some mergers, even if they would not form a structure eligible for incentives under Acts 153, 156, or 46. Section 3A states that a plan submitted by a district or a group of districts could, quote, "propose to retain its current governance structure, to work with other districts to form a different governance structure, or to enter into another model of joint activity." As far as questions about whether the open meeting law is triggered by email communications among a quorum of the SU board members or local board members, the law does not differentiate between topics where a board takes action and topics where no action is taken. The law prohibits any discussion of the business of the board outside of the warned meeting. Under the law, my view is that issues and questions surrounding school district governance and the implementation of Act 46 constitute the business of both the SU and local boards. In fact, David's reference to Section 9 clearly points to the role that local boards play in determining which approach to take on Act 46 implementation. So all of that is leading into various other things, who started out just on the idea of open communications, but I guess I'm still confused, David, as to what your point is that the other lawyer is making.
Well, she seemed to say it doesn't matter if it's something that is actionable by this board or not, you're still not supposed to talk about it. Wasn't that the last thing that you said?
Yeah, if it has to do with governance.
And what was your other lawyer saying that you think is different from this?
That since we will never vote, the Bradwell Town School Board will never vote on a merger, and we can't affect or influence what happens in the Study Committee, that it's not really our business. If we went to, maybe it would be different about an alternative, but the, but again, it's two lawyers' opinions, but I don't think that that's the question here. The question here is how do we communicate among ourselves?
Right, that's the first question. I'm still trying to understand the second.
Because we're not going to, that would have to go to court, and somebody would have to make a judgment about, about the law, and I don't think any of us are going to pursue that. I think the thing to focus on is, what do we do if we want to share information, and what's the, within the law?
Regardless of what we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, because it will be, the things that we just talked about will certainly not, there won't be a question about whether it's school district business or not.
Okay, so are we all in agreement that we'll BCC? I guess that's the easiest answer. So any comments going back and forth? And then I guess, David, I'm still lost in some of this, I'm just trying.
I am, too, it's, yeah.
But, because when you say that our school board here has no opinion on what, and will never vote, we've already voted as a board to send it up?
But we, we won't vote on a merger.
Meaning?
We will as individuals, as a school, the town school board won't.
He's saying, as a town, it will be a town vote, it will not be a school board vote.
Yeah, it's not a school board vote. And we can't, we can, we can change, you know, when somebody like Mark left, we can assign another member to be on the committee, but we can't affect what the committee does. We can't even withdraw from the committee. Or, and when Democrats tried to change their representative, the agency, so they couldn't do that either. So it's very much, it's a very, it's a statutory distinct organization, and that's where the question comes in. But again, it's not one that really we need to deliberate, I'm still not so clear.
I'm still unclear on this, I think I heard something about, like, an email, but just blind CC people?
Right.
But that's still going against the concept of discussing or sharing board, business of the board.
I think she's saying you can share general information, like agendas, information, say, here's an article, I don't know, so Jerry, you said something once about, in case anyone wants to know, you know, there was an incident at the school that the police were called. That sort of information would come out, but if it becomes a, hey, you all, do you think that we should, then you've crossed the line and it needs to be a discussion. I take this that I can send as board chair, or you could send, on tonight's agenda, we're going to discuss what are, whether we should have a community forum on trauma-informed schools, here's information on what we're doing for professional development currently. But we can't say thumbs up or down on whether we're going to do a community forum.
Okay.
Does that make sense to everybody?
And now, how are we going to handle, like, we've had questions come be for us via email, and I know we've copied everybody on the board.
So like, the last question was from a town meeting rep saying, are we going to talk about Act 46, an alternative structure?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, let's play that one through. So I answered back saying, it's on the agenda, I don't, what else will come up on the agenda? I think that's okay to answer that one.
Yeah, yeah, that's a, and then you want to send them to the agenda, so they see it.
So I guess it's one of those areas that we need to always be aware of, and that it's easy. I think you'll have fun when you go to your training, with, like, Harry is probably doing it again.
Yeah, I'm going to have fun, I don't know whether that is.
Well, Harry's already used to some questions, because what we did, he didn't get to do any of the agenda he wanted, remember, Dave?
Yeah, we didn't, yeah, we just took the...
We didn't get to the agenda, we got off on another train.
He tried getting us back on track.
All right, so we always end our meeting, which is going over slightly.
Oh, Jill, one more thing, I wanted to, one of the things that, and this is for your later-on interest, the, this is the actual statute on the powers of school boards, and, you know, this is what the law actually says their duty, and there's a whole bunch of details, and, and it's just, one of the things I wanted to point out, which kind of summarizes it, number 15 on the second page, and I apologize that we went on three pages, we couldn't get it back to... get it back to you. And it's just basically that the school board exercises the general powers given to legislative branch, the municipality, that we're the rule-making or the law-making part of it. And the rest of it goes into a lot more detail. And then one thing that, I wouldn't have even attached it, except that it may relate later on to, depending on what happens with mergers or other ways that we align ourselves with other schools, number 31 on the last page. Subject to a requirement of another section, we can enter contracts with other school boards for joint programming, services, facilities, and professional and other staff, so, I didn't even, I never noticed that one before, but Jill and I have been talking a lot recently about the relations with other school boards and alternatives to 46, and it just struck me that there is right there saying we can do it, so, in case anybody thought we couldn't. But the main thing is that we're the legislative body. This is the actual law. Did you decide to go ahead with this today, or wait?
I was just going to ask that. Are you comfortable going ahead with it?
Yeah, I am, it's, it's, I didn't know what it was, and now I do.
Does anybody else not want to sign, and want to have more time studying up before we actually sign the Code of Ethics? Otherwise, we could sign that tonight. Want more time on that?
I'd like to ask a question, is, is this, is this amendable, or can we amend this?
We make the rules.
These are, because at the top it says Vermont Code of Ethics. What does that mean? Is that state statute?
Where does this come from?
No, it comes from the Vermont School Board Association.
Okay. Here's the reason I ask that, so we're not actually bound to that.
You signed it, you are.
Not my signing, because what I'm saying is, as I read, you know, I brought up the wording at the beginning about excellent return on, but still, still don't know, I don't, I feel uneasy about what that means. So I looked, and it would seem to me, both for consistency and a richer meaning, that in fact, what that says is, as a, it would say, as a member of my local school board, I, and then go into the WSASU mission statement, which is really the same thing, or, well, it seems to me that our mission statement is what really guides us.
Remind us, for exactly what it says. We've seen it, but we don't look at it every week.
The mission statement says, to provide a safe, inclusive, and supportive environment where all students grow academically, socially, and emotionally, and are challenged to reach their potential as social and global community members. I mean, that too could be tweaked, but it's a much more humane, inclusive, it just feels like those are clo, this whole thing, excellent return on investment, sounds like something that was written by Bill Gates.
But the thing that I think that Ron spoke a bit more eloquently than me about was that our role, I've kind of put it into two categories, the role of the school board, that we make sure the kids are getting a great education at a price our taxpayers can afford. So, and then there's a value. That particular statement doesn't talk about the value. And that's the role of us as the budget. That is our main thing that we do here.
But that's automatically, it seems to me, you know, that doesn't need to be in here because every single year, the school board is going to face the town and talk about the budget, and explain every single year why the budget is what it is.
Until we're merged.
And, well, then it's going to be on a larger scale, or it's going to be on a larger scale, and maybe that could be adapted in some way, if our needs were a little different, but it's not really necessary, I don't think, to assure that the citizens, the taxpayers are getting a bang for their buck.
So how about this, Boone? How about we take, we'll table it until next meeting?
Yeah.
And we'll come back, we can all think on that, and see whether we want to make some sort of changes, and I guess, Ron, you can check and see if that's...
All right, that's fine, that's what we can insert the mission.
We can insert the mission and leave the other part in, or whatever, so maybe think of that for next time, and we'll come back to it. How's that? The last thing we normally do is set the agenda item. So the next agenda will definitely have the Board of Ethics signing, and...
Act 46 update.
Act 46 update is a constant, and then we have, although there's no meeting until April 4.
Jill, I wasn't sure if you wanted me to contact the early childhood people for the first May meeting, or not? I wasn't clear what you want.
So I think maybe we want to contact the early childhood people for the April 12th meeting, and tell them that the board member David would be there.
Okay.
And encourage them that we're following up and talking to them, if any, David would be there to hear from them if they have any questions.
That would be great.
Right?
And even though we haven't agreed to the Code of Ethics, that I won't make any commitments and make compromises.
Right on, we got it. All right, anything else?
I won't give away any empty questions.
The next meeting is May 3.
Next meeting is May 3. Kim will be running that meeting as vice chair, I won't be here.
And where is it?
And where is the next meeting?
EES.
Change to EES.
Okay, I won't be there.
Oh, can we use the conference room?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make sure it's available, and that you have that space.
Okay, any other questions, or can I have a motion to adjourn? We're late.
This is adjourned.
Second. Any discussion, all in favor?
Done.
Done.